Good evening, welcome. I'm opening back up our regular Board of Education meeting for September 14th, 2023. And we are going to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. And in just a moment, sorry, before we do, I'm going to ask that we remain standing after the pledge to do a moment of silence for Coach Mike. So if we could remain standing after the pledge, that would be appreciated for a moment of silence. Patty Mora, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please, Patty? Thank you. All right, we have our roll call. Vice President Wong.
Here.
Clerk Coffee.
Present.
Trustee Pazotti. Thank you. Trustee Vanegas will not be joining us this evening, but I too am present. And that takes us to our announcement of action taken in closed session. Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. Information received. Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators, WSTA, CSJA, and Management. Information received and direction given. Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Superintendent Goals. Goals discussed and agreed upon. And that takes us to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Dr. Hildreth.
Yes, President Kirby Gonzalez, I have one request to remove Action Item P1. Approval of Amendment Number One with Universal Engineering Sciences to perform additional services for the Westfield Village Elementary School Modernization Project. There's some information that we still need to gather before we want to ask the Board for moving forward with approval.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other changes? Okay, do we have the approval of the agenda with Action Item One pulled? Okay, moved by Vice President Wong, my second. Seconded by Clerk Coffee. All in favor?
Aye.
I too vote aye. Now we have our communications and celebrations. We are recognizing our Washington Unified School District Board Resolutions adopted September 2023. Yorgos Kazanis, our Executive Director of Communications, welcome.
Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez and trustees and members of the audience. As the slide deck is booting up, I want to just give some brief context for this particular item. So what we started doing in Washington Unified a couple of years ago is every school district resolution or every school board resolution that is approved for the entire year, we've started presenting those to the school board in the July School Board Meeting. They're adopted in July, and that gives staff and school sites plenty of time to implement them or incorporate them and weave them into their lesson plans, calendars. It just makes things a lot more streamlined for planning purposes. What we're looking to achieve this year is each month now throughout the school year, we will have a communications item where we focus and highlight the specific board resolutions that are relevant for that particular month. So with that, we'll go to the next slide. And as always, we like to show our alignment to the district's new strategic plan. As you can see there in column one, all of these particular items, they really cover a lot of different topics and subjects, so they pertain to the whole child, ensuring that students are provided access and opportunity to various resources and relevant educational experiences, and then again, positive school climate. Next slide, please. This particular month in September, we are recognizing National Suicide Prevention Month, National Hispanic Heritage Month, and National Attendance Month. So we'll briefly review those particular resolutions and highlight some of the activities going on district-wide with regard to each one. And as soon as we're done, we'll also look into October and just give you a sneak peek for our community about what to expect. On the next slide, with regard to National Suicide Prevention Month, I'm actually going to invite a guest speaker to the podium to join me. One of our school social workers, Patty Mora, if you could join me at the podium. While she's coming up, I want to ask every single member of the Student Family Support Services office to please stand up for a moment and acknowledge their presence, that they're here tonight. We often say in Washington Unified that it takes a village to raise a child, and there's no better opportunity to really highlight that village and who those faces are behind the scenes that really support our students, our families, and our staff on a daily basis. So thank you to everyone who's in attendance.
No one stood up.
If you could all, that was your cue. I thought it was a little quiet back there.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Mora. Students know me as Ms. Patty, and I'm a school social worker at Stonegate Elementary School. I also have three children that are students in our district. I'm here to highlight suicide prevention services and supports available to WUSD students and families. There's a lot that goes into preventing suicide. That includes making sure schools are safe spaces for all students, that students know that they're cared for, and that we take seriously any possible threats to safety. Our district has a suicide prevention policy that can be accessed on the WUSD website. Our district has eight school social workers, eight school counselors, and 10 school psychologists that are all credentialed and are able to screen for suicide risk and work with families to connect them to emergency services. We have our amazing youth outreach specialists who are able to identify students that are in crisis and in need of intervention. As a school social worker, I complete suicide risk screenings, safety plan with students and parents, provide referrals to community mental health resources, work with parents and admin on school reentry planning, as well as offer students mental health support. We have two community partners, Suicide Prevention of Yolo County and Victor Community Support Services that conduct presentations on suicide prevention. Victor Community Support Services also provides school-based counseling to WUSD students who meet the criteria for this service. We also partner with West Sacramento Police Department's Mental Health Clinician for crisis intervention and assessments. Some of the mental health resources we provide students and families are numbers to crisis hotlines such as the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. You can text and call 988. The Trevor Project, which is suicide prevention for LGBTQ+ youth, you can text START to 678-678. Ask Team Crisis Line, and the West Sacramento line is 916-371-3779, as well as refer them to the West Sacramento Mental Health Clinic. Thank you for your time and allowing me to share this important information. Thank you.
Thank you again, everyone in attendance. Next time, we'll work on our queues and all that. So on the next slide, we want to highlight-
Can I ask you a quick question before we go? This is an important one for you. Because we have so many people here in attendance that we so appreciate, and we want to honor all of these, would there be time or space to have everyone a picture of all your faces while you're all here together? I know it doesn't happen every day you're in spaces. Should we do that at the end, or should we do that between presentations?
We could pause and do it now, just in case anyone has anything pressing to get to in the rest of the evening.
Okay, all right. Okay, I would love to welcome you all up and just thank you and-
Let's have the entire team then line up in front of the dais, and we'll take a group photo real quick.
Thank you.
She said now.
All right. Everyone, look at the camera. Make sure you can see the camera. And on three, one, two, three. Perfect. All right, on the next slide, please, we would like to call attention to National Hispanic Heritage Month. This was another resolution that was adopted in the month of July. This particular resolution or this month of recognition actually starts in the middle of September, so it ranges from September 15th to October 15th. The district will be communicating this out tomorrow to all of our families and staff through email and social media posts and on our website. We actually are working with staff and a couple of our student groups on some of our schools to actually have a student-led presentation at the next board meeting. With this particular celebration starting mid-month, and school has also started just nearly a month ago, people need a little bit more time to kind of get things rolling. So be patient with us with that particular item, but we'll have some students and staff hopefully at the next board meeting. And then on the next slide, we would like to call attention to Attendance Awareness Month. What we started doing as a district last year was creating a custom communications campaign specific to attendance. This is our conscious and meaningful effort to really take a stand against chronic absence, and really, it's us telling the story of the people within Washington Unified, our students, our staff, our families, telling the stories of how they're achieving great things in our community and in our schools, and using that to do the talking for us. This year, what we've added is an additional layer of raising awareness and really an educational layer where we're actually defining what chronic absence is in our community. A lot of folks don't really know what that is, and sometimes the state definition of chronic absence can be a little bit difficult to fully understand. But in our school district, there's 180 days of instruction, and you're allowed to miss basically 18%. So that's 18 days of absence before you technically qualify for the chronic absence classification. What we're doing, though, by telling these stories is really highlighting the great things that are happening in our district and telling the story of our why. And again, letting that kind of dictate the direction that we're moving as a community, as a school community. And that really helps us emphasize the importance of excellent attendance. So we've been starting, we started with the first of September, doing a more traditional print communication out to all families and staff, just calling attention to the fact that it is Attendance Awareness Month. Last week and the week before, if you're tuned into all of our communication channels, there were several social media posts, other announcements. There was a video that came out that highlighted Riverbank Elementary School specifically and the great folks that work there and go to school there. And we have other posts and other information and resources that we'll be communicating out through the remainder of the month. Our cadence for the month is about one to two posts or pieces of information each week, and it's really our attempt to really draw attention to attendance. And we're hoping to draw that out throughout the whole course of the school year as well, because it's not just one focused month, it's a year-long commitment. And on our next slide, we just wanted to highlight briefly, I won't read them off, but these are the resolutions that the Board had approved in July for the month of October. There's some great occasions to celebrate on there, and we'll do the same presentation at the first meeting in October again, where we give you a highlight of various activities and different efforts that the district is doing to highlight those particular resolutions, and we'll try to bring as many guest speakers as well to speak from the actual ground and from our school communities about what's happening there. And with that, that's all that I have for you.
Any questions or comments? All right, thank you so much, and thank you also for putting together the document that showed all the resolutions of the year and getting that out.
Of course, happy to.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. So that now takes us to our association reports, and our first one is WSTA with President Nep. Welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent Hildreth, wherever you went. The disappearing act. Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, Vice President Wong, Clerk Coffee, trustees. It is good to see you again. Hello Cabinet, we see each other plenty. I just wanted to, first of all, I wanted to say, in celebration of really good communication and working forward, trying to make sure that we're communicating, I had a really a nice meeting, an informal meeting with our Vice President Wong last Friday, and we had some really good discussions about ways to work together to move the district forward. It was really, it was really positive, the discussion, and one of the items that we discussed that I, well, I've talked before the Board about this, but I want to bring it forward again, is we're so grateful in WUSD that we have these amazing restorative centers, the wellness centers that we have put on our campuses. And it's a really good first step. But one of the things that teachers will tell you is that the next step is to make sure that they're staffed. We need to make sure that there are places for kids to go when they need our support. And especially coming after hearing about National Suicide Awareness Month, we need these spaces for real-time issues on campus. Right now, teachers are reserving those spaces to have restorative circles and have a space to talk about restorative issues, but this is something that they previously did in their classroom, now they're doing it in another room, and it's a nice space. But that's not the intention of these spaces. These spaces are supposed to be for real-time support. So one of the things I would like to encourage the Cabinet and the Board to do, and I understand that this is difficult, is seek the resources to staff these facilities so that we can support the kids who need them. We're always saying we need to, we need to look with an eye that turns away from suspension. Well, this is the solution to that, because we know suspension doesn't work. But part of making sure that we educate a child is educating them on their mental health, on their behavior, on the structures of what it means to be in school with other kids and growing up. And so I'm not sure what this looks like. I know budgets are always tight. I do happen to know that we have a lot of CSEA employees that for years and years have been on these really odd schedules where, you know, they're on for two hours, off for two hours, on for two hours, and they've committed themselves to this district. And if we could find the funds to give some CSEA employees full-time pay and benefits for their dedication to the district, that would be amazing, and they would be the perfect people to staff restorative centers, because if we're talking about community and community schools, our CSEA members are 100% the heart of our community. That being said, in the meantime, we may need to think creatively about how to make sure we can do this for our kids, because we have a lot of kids with a lot of SEL needs right now. I wanted to talk about where WSTA is going to be trying to work with other community partners, including WUSD and CSEA, to promote a community schools or a series of community schools roundtables or panel discussions where teachers and community members can come and just ask questions. Not very formal, but this is what a community school is, this is what it can be for you, this is how you can participate if you want to get involved. I think WUSD has done an admirable job of reaching out to try and meet the community, but I think it's time for us to really bring all parties in and sit in one space and give the opportunity for all parties to express what community school means to them. So that might mean having a panelist that's a member of our community and community groups. Panelists, that might be a WUSD Cabinet member, a WSTA member, a CSEA member, and, you know, all of the different people that have an idea that can express what their dream is for community schools, but also the public can start to develop their dream for what their school will look like. On a bright note, I want to say, we talked about this a little bit last time, but on Monday and Tuesday, we are engaging with WUSD in an interspace bargaining training in Etomas. We're really excited for the collaboration. We've really started to develop good collaboration over the years, but this is a good next step to look and see if there's a possibility that we can develop this more. I was excited to hear that there's a possibility that we might have some visitation from a couple of Board members, and we'll be delighted to see you there, because as you know, that's a big part of the process, from the top all the way down, everybody understanding the way it works for effective communication. So thank you for those of you who can commit to some time to attend. Something, I just went to a conference this past weekend, and we were talking about SPED, which everybody's talking about across the state, special education and interest of special education students. We've talked about this a lot, I think I say this phrase all the time, but we all know the impacts on special education are growing, like, we knew they were coming, but it's really finally, finally starting to hit home. And there are no districts in the state right now that are equipped to deal with these numbers, and we really have to redefine how we think about this. What does this instruction look like, and how do we serve the needs of kids and make sure that they have their least restrictive environment provided as an opportunity before them? This being said, this is one of those items that really requires the input from everybody, but particularly the practitioners. You know, our PARAs, our RSP teachers, our SPED teachers, our speech and language pathologists, all of the folks that are involved in the room have to be part of figuring out what we're going to do to make sure we meet the needs of the kids, because that's what this is really about. And I just wanted to put out there, there's been a major policy shift, and I'm just now finding out about it, it's happening at Bridgeway, but we're moving to more of a, I want to call it a modified co-teach approach. But the problem is, is that teachers haven't been a part of this, and we don't know what it looks like. So we have, for example, we're mainstreaming some kids into general education classrooms, which is a good thing, it's what we should do. But when you have someone going into eighth grade that maybe is learning at a first-grade level, our teachers need to understand how they're going to support that. And there's even confusion right now, is who's building that modification? Is it our RSP teachers? Is it our PARAs? Is it the teachers? Some teachers have been told that they need to make those modifications for every single student that comes, come in their room, and we're talking about whole lesson plans. And I'm not saying that that is not the case, but this is a discussion that the whole family has to have, right? This is, our practitioners are who do this job every day. And we know, you guys have heard all last year and the year before, they're feeling overwhelmed and having these massive changes come towards them, and they don't feel like they're a part of the process, is probably not only not a good job for retention and recruitment of SPED teachers, which we know we're having a real hard time with, it's not a good choice for our kids, because our practitioners are the people who know how to serve these kids, and if we're not talking to them. So one of the things, I know we're probably, we have task force whiplash, right? Because we have so many tasks force, but I'm saying specifically on this issue, because this is ongoing and it's going to continue for years to come, we know this, we should have an active working group, including teachers, RSP, PARAs, our CSEA partners, administrators. We should be looking at this, looking at what other people are doing in the state and other states, and trying to figure out how we can address this, and it certainly shouldn't be top-down. We understand the district's right to manage and the right to set policy, but that policy should take into account what the practitioners are saying. So that's what I'm urging there. Let's see. Our WSTA members are going increasingly concerned about actions at school board meetings being taken on by some activist groups. And recently, there was an activist group that affected change in Rockland that was a very negative change for students. And I'm talking about our LGBTQ students who deserve to be seen, loved, and respected, and the opposite is happening in some schools. So I'm not here to ask you for anything, I am here to thank you, every one of you, for being champions of our LGBTQ community and plus, and also for any marginalized groups in our community. You have always been there, you have always stood up, even when it's unpopular, and with all of my heart, thank you, it makes me proud to be WUSD.
Thank you, President Nep, and that takes us to our CSEA report with President Gondara.
Good evening, Board President, Superintendent Hildreth, trustees, Cabinet. My update is short tonight, and then my Vice President will give an update. But I want to talk about a reoccurring theme that Classified hasn't had to bring to you guys for a couple of years now, and that is Keenan and their medical brokerage. Again, we had a meeting, it's a reoccurring theme, and three of you up here have been here long enough to know the struggles and the inaccuracies of rates and the timelines of getting rates, and it's happening again. We had a medical benefits meeting, May 22nd, and Classified asked Keenan to provide CalPERS breakaway rates. So if we wanted to leave CalPERS and we wanted medical, we wanted to go back under Keenan. Well, CalPERS releases their rates July 27th. We had another district medical-
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
My school is on lockdown.
Am I being awkward?
Where I teach. All right.
We had another, so CalPERS releases their rates July 27th. We had a meeting August 29th, the district certificated Classified, and they provided all rates, right? Dental, vision, and then breakaway rates. I was a little skeptical of the rates they provided, because it still said, it was under the classified section, but it stated certificated high rates. So I followed up that evening with an email chain to the representative from Keenan, and we're going back and forth, and they stated that it would be, if we left CalPERS, it would be, we would still fall under the CalPERS renewal rate for 2024. So essentially, it'd be the same thing. So I asked for clarification, you know, is this for sure the rates? And they responded, last Friday night's football game, so September 8th at 6:03 PM, with another spreadsheet. Well, you guys are aware, my members are aware, Keenan's aware. I have timelines that I have to give before I can hold a meeting, and then I have to give respect to my members to go back, review those rates with their household, schedule a voting meeting, right? So have an informational meeting, then a voting meeting, all this, and the board resolution to leave CalPERS would have had to be on tonight's board agenda. Well, anybody that puts, I do know now, but anybody that puts items on board agendas knows, you know, you don't put it on the day before, right? There's a timeline for that also. So my struggle is, again, with these inaccuracies that we get and these delays that we get from Keenan, and this is a recurring theme over and over and over again, there was a time, again, three of you were up here, where they provided us rates the night of the vote, 45 minutes before our CSEA vote, our classified vote, they emailed us with a rate change, and the district had to pick up the difference. This was a year or two, three, about three years ago. This is concerning, because, and Ruth will speak more about this, but it's going to cost eight-hour employees, for some it's not a big deal, but for others it is, $65 out of pocket this upcoming, you know, calendar year. Well, six-hour employees, it's going to cost them, for Kaiser, it's going to cost them $297, a six-hour employee to cover themselves. So this is concerning. Again, the rates that were proposed on the 8th, the 8th of- Again, the rates that were proposed on the 8th, the 8th of September, right, last Friday, if we had them in time, maybe we would have left CalPERS for a more affordable plan. But again, we don't have the time, you know, the inaccuracies of the rates. So this is concerning. So I asked the board, I asked the district, next year is going to happen again next year. Next year, we need the rates early August. So if CalPERS releases their rates July 27th, we need the rates early August to, you know, to, yeah, yeah, it's fine, to provide us enough time to have informational meeting, a vote, put a board resolution on, you know, the board meeting and to go that route. The last thing I'll leave you with before Ruth speaks is, Ruth, is I'd like to thank Farah and her HR team. We had a very good meeting, Superintendent Hildreth, Farah, myself, a few weeks ago, two, three weeks ago. Labor relation meetings are improving drastically. Communication is improving. I just want to thank HR and Superintendent Hildreth, and there's Ruth.
Thank you, President Gondara. Good evening, Board President, trustees, Superintendent, staff and guests. Several weeks ago, I spoke before you asking for a call to action, asking that we all look inside ourselves and discover our own driving forces for the betterment of the district. For me, this year, my focus and goal is to have a more productive relationship with the district and improve upon any issues, concerns that arise. I am hoping that I am joined in similar driving forces and calls to action, and that we all can commit to not letting things simmer or believe that in time, problems will resolve themselves. That has never worked and will never work. Together with positive intentions, we can improve the professional lives of CSEA members. And in return, the district will have lower turnover rates, higher productivity, and provide healthier workplace climates. I believe these things are possible if we all act with those intentions in unison. Tonight, we are sharing again publicly that our health aid contracts were cut by two hours and that they were notified only a few days before school began. More specifically, we had an MOU in place granting extra hours, and instead of working with CSEA to get another MOU in place, HR notified them by saying how valuable they all are, but the MOU would not be renewed this year. The omnipresent elephant in the room, so to speak, that nobody wants to address is that it's systemic inequity. Many of us in CSEA feel it, and it's reinforced by the devaluing of our roles by those who make much higher salaries than us, by cutting our hours like those in the health aid offices, by not inviting us to events that are political in nature, but showcase and celebrate our work. The governor himself is advocating to expand our focus to include jobs that do not require higher educations or fancy degrees. I can attest that health aides are vital to the health and well-being of every office on this campus. Without health aides, our students will suffer. When there are no health aides, our secretarial staff will be burdened to the point of not being able to fulfill their own duties, which are already immense. Tonight, I'm grateful that I can report that the health aides will be offered, they're two hours back. Several, next topic. Several days ago, the district experienced a lockdown or soft lockdown. I'm not kidding when I say that there should be no such thing as a soft lockdown. There's either a threat or not. We would urge the board to consider bringing back the school resource officer position, maybe host a special board meeting or provide a public forum where we can discuss the need of having a presence back on our campuses. If we had had an SRO, that person could be dedicated to handling these types of threats and many other safety issues. And President Nep spoke about that there, these threats are coming. This is real. Lastly, CSEA was asked to co-sign a letter showing support for the United Way and its involvement in our community schools. For the record, again, we support our community schools. However, we cannot support a local nonprofit agency that has no government oversight, no board, no public meetings or agendas. We have, we have no understanding of what's going on beyond the red tape. We also cannot support salaries of United Way employees that are being funded with community schools grant money. For transparency purposes, in case you didn't know, the oversight of the funds for all of the federal grant money is directed by the United Way. So the United Way, who wrote the grants for our schools, are overseeing the grants. We have asked and asked for the allowances, the cost analysis breakdowns, the budget expenditure list, the spending thus far, the projected annual budgets. To date, no actual figures have been shared or provided. You, the public, anyone cannot find the info anywhere, not on our websites, not on the United Way websites. At this time, because of the lack of transparency with these grant expenditures and the federal monies therein that are not freely accessible to us or the public for review, we are not willing to co-sign or support the United Way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ruth and Daniel. And I wanted to, to also acknowledge that my phone going off in the middle of people speaking, and I know that you need to be heard and it's important. So I'll share what that is, and that is I teach at a school site. And when that school site is on active shooter lockdown, it doesn't matter if my phone is on silent, and that's what you hear. And this is the second time this week I have heard that. The first time, though, I was, of course, with students. And so very much noted. And, and I am not interrupting the meeting. That's what happens, unfortunately. So the sad reality that we have. Thank you for your words. Okay. But it's been resolved. I should have told you that part, sorry. So little, yeah, our heart goes pounding, you know, when you worry about that, but it was resolved. The second ring is what that was for. Okay. So that now takes us into our public comments this evening, and I appreciate you all for being here. We have four public comments. We also had a public comment that was sent to us via email, which we have all read and will be posted into the public record as well per our processes. So I have our disclaimer to read to you all. Okay. At our regular board meeting held on February 9th, 2023, the board resolved that written public comments received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board, but not read into the record during the meeting. And so that is what we received and will be there. Members of the public may address the board on topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know, the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this form. Item's not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the right of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of the students' rights to privacy, and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it's important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in public board meetings, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting laws that govern this meeting. Okay. Thank you for that. And our first public comment is Samantha Burke.
I don't usually talk in public. Not allowed. So I had actually come to support my health aides because of the importance, their job, and how impactful it is to me. So the fact that this has now been resolved is amazing and honestly like heartwarming. But I really hope that it's a resolution that's not just for this school year, and it's a resolution that's going to be carried on for the rest of their careers here in WSD, because I can't do this every year. I can't do this every year where I come to school, and then they're cut, and then they're telling me they're going to leave, and then I'm writing letters of recommendations for them because I love them and I want them to do well, and they need to survive, and they need to have a livable wage. And it would be nice if that livable wage could be here instead of somewhere else. It would be nice if WSD could be the place that everyone wants to come to instead of the place that everyone's fleeing, the place where on Edjoin, you're looking at it because it's giving a decent salary, a decent benefit package, instead of looking at how it's not. That would be a really amazing thing. But since it did happen for now, it kind of defeats the purpose of the rest of what I was going to have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Okay. And that now takes us to Nan. Dear, I do this every time, and I practice it. Dear Danago, and correct me, please, at the microphone.
Hold on, Mario, I'm not ready. Superintendent Hildreth, Board of Trustees and Cabinet members. My name is Nan Jordan Anglem, and I'm the health aide at Westfield. I've been a health aide for 20-plus years, and I became employed with the Washington Unified School District in 2018. I agreed to a six-hour day, but all of my benefits were paid. Since then, insurance rates have increased yearly, and I have been paying out of pocket. Come January, the increased rate of Kaiser will cost approximately $275 out of pocket, almost $300 with vision and health out of pocket. Most classified are six-hour employees. Most make under $30,000 a year. This is not a living wage. Taxes are then taken out, and with this increased insurance, that would be another $3,000 taken Classified are supervising the children, they're feeding the children, they're serving families, they're providing transportation, they're teaching and providing health care. Classified are struggling, and we really need your help. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. We have Destiny Straw, and then after that, we'll have Colin Malik. Welcome, Destiny.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Destiny Straw. I am the health aide at Southport. For the past five years, I have been there. And I have to say, I love my job. I love what I do. But as a health aide, and, you know, we did eight hours, but now we got back to six, and it was a temporary. I get that, and I understand that. However, I'm a single mom, and it's hard. It's hard with gas prices. It's hard with food. And so it's just really hard to, to live in this world. I don't want to go anywhere. I want to be in Washington Unified. I am alumni of Washington Unified, and I, as a child, as a little girl, wanted to be a part of my community, and I am in Washington Unified. And I want to stay here. So I ask every one of you, please, hear us. Here are the job duties we do. You know, the amount of stuff we have to take and the amount of kids that come into our office, it has increased. Yeah, COVID's over, but the kids are still coming. You know, the tasks, the documentation that we have to do. On top of that, immunizations, that's a process in itself. And we have to even, we're not supposed to even leave our office, but we still have to file those. So I just ask that you just help us and be there for us and support us as health. Thank you.
Thank you, Destiny and Colin Malik. And after Colin, we have Aisha John.
Always work, work, work. That's why we have this job, right? One second. Let me just pull my notes up. Hi, members of the board. Good evening, Cabinet. Welcome. Hello. Thank you, and glad you're all here, Cheryl. Good to see you. Three deltas and then a huge, massive shout out. So if I do run into my three minutes, please just note that my last one is a big positive. So I am aware of the clock. I know how I, you know how I like those things there. First of all, is the issue of timesheets. We have worked with HR in positive, meaningful manners, especially on Article 1210 for safety and work orders. It would be nice to see the same situation applied to timesheets. The ability to have and send an electronic timesheet or to get time stamped is well past due. Paper copies are outdated, old school, and we can do better. You know it, and we want to do that better. I know there's logistical hurdles and things to work on, but it is an achievable goal. It would make everybody's life better. We're cutting down on emissions, saving the environment, yada, 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 all the great things. Let's do that. We do it for frontline. We did it for work orders. We have precedent with Article 1210, and we can make that happen. Next off, I do want, it's kind of a delta and a shout out. I want to give a thank you to Monique today for helping and facilitating and looking into solutions for reimbursements. I had a teacher save over $85 and then told that we're looking to get away from reimbursements after this teacher had gone out on their own and saved nearly $100 from my social science department. That is an expert level move that we should be supporting and validating. Reimbursements are okay to do, and we need to make sure that our business services and our teams are trained to be able to do those. So big thank you to Monique on that, because now I can take that money and use it for students that I have in the classroom right now. $85 is a lot. That's a lot of Sharpies. Next, I would like to encourage until and still tell the board, please, we need to make sure and maintain that we are internally transferring first, that we are using our best and brightest, and then when vacancies come up and that people are interested in positions, at least four long-term subpositions that have rolled out, that we are effectively following the contract, and that we are making sure that the people who want to stay in the district, that want to go to Westfield to teach math, or want to go to Bridgway to teach science, that we get them those opportunities. There should be no stone walls. It's a grievable offense in the contract, and we can do better on that. Finally, my biggest shout out, ooh, I get 40 seconds. There's my boss. My boss is the best, Brandon Billingsley. She gave me the best compliment today, and I'm humbled and honored and grateful for it. She said, you're the voice of RC. And I, and this goes back to something I've come up here and talked to you over and over again, and it is amazing. Trustees Pizzotti and Coffey have both seen it. The community is enthralled with the voice, and the new sound system is amazing. I've got YouTube going on. I've got sound effects. I've got all this stuff. My boss has been super supportive, and it's just, it is exactly how we wanted it, and it sounds so good. And our kids love it. Our community loves it. Parents are totally digging it. They're laughing in the stands because it's kind of hard to stay interested in a 40 to nothing U-12 game sometimes, but thank you. Love it. Have a great night.
All right. Thank you. Welcome up, Aisha John. Did I say that correctly?
Hi. My name is Aisha Yunk.
Oh, I didn't say it at all correctly. Okay, I'll write that down for next.
Hi, Dr. Hildreth and the board. Good evening. Good evening to the cabinet. Hi. So I was coming for two reasons tonight. The first reason is I wanted to support our fabulous health aides. I cannot tell you enough about this magnificent woman, Ms. Nan, behind me. Sorry, I'm a teacher, and like I tend to speak really fast, so I'm going to take a deep breath. First of all, I've worked for the district for six years now, and I've loved almost every minute of it. And Ms. Nan has been paramount in that because she's helped me with so many students with health issues, helped me during lockdowns with students that have severe anxiety and can't be in a classroom environment during a lockdown drill, and she's been there for that. that. So whatever we can do to make sure that they feel supported and love is just like so near and dear to my heart, so yay to our health aides. On a safety note, I'm also a member and resident of West Sacramento proudly, live right down the street, and I'm gonna start actually to tell, I'm gonna tell you a story. This actually is very funny that your phone went off tonight, because this relates to Catapult TMS, which is a system that we use on our phones to report lockdown drills and to make sure students are safe. Last spring, our school had a soft lockdown drill unexpectedly. I was sitting with my coworkers eating lunch, and an alarm went off. All of the kids, it was like a nightmare scenario, because all of the kids are at lunch outside, so you don't know what's gonna happen. I ran outside. Apologies, I tend to cry with public speaking, and I'd really like not, so give me a second. I went outside to get my students, like, 200 kids, that's it, it felt like hundreds of kids, get my students inside the classroom. Lo and behold, my cellphone had fallen out of my pocket. Not the first time it's happened, and I know, I know we like to believe that we're attached at the hip of our phones. We are not. I think in a lot of cases, fortunately, we're not attached them all the time. I know it's so important to keep our students safe, and especially during a lockdown drill. I personally think, instead of using our personal devices, which in our contract states we should not have to use our personal electronic devices, I think walkie-talkies might be a much better solution. There are frequencies that we can utilize that would be different than the ones that our yard duties utilize. I think that we could also train our parents to use walkie-talkies in case of, in case something were to happen to a teacher. And I also think about our teachers with health issues. For example, teachers with type 1 diabetes or who have seizure disorders. If somebody, if a walkie-talkie were in the classroom, they would have the opportunity to, sorry, just get that safety, or much quicker, especially if they didn't have a cellphone. Anyway, I'm in support of walkie-talkies in all of our classrooms if it's possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Aisha, for your comments and for your suggestions and your passion. Okay. Important notes, and thank you to everyone who gave their time this evening to be here and to speak and to be heard. All right, that takes us now to our information discussion items. So we have our overview of the new Washington Unified School District Indicator Platform, and that is again with Yorgos Kazanis, our Executive Director of Communications.
Excuse me, good evening again, trustees. As the slide deck is booting up, I will give a little bit of context for this item. So this particular Indicator Platform, as we're calling it, this is essentially a way that our team has created to take this new strategic plan, but bring it into life so that we can engage with it, so that our community can engage with it. It's an opportunity for us to set benchmarks and tell our story as a school district and as a school community about where we are today and where we want to go in the future and what our targets are along the way. So with the next slide, as always, we want to highlight the alignment to the plan, and as funny as it might look to check all the boxes, this really is one of those rare occasions where we are using this tool as a communications platform to tell the story of everything that the plan is about, because it touches on all of our work in all of our offices, all of our schools, all of our departments. On the next slide, we were just gonna highlight briefly that we're gonna show you what the plan is, highlight it, why it came about, who the audiences are for, and then share next steps as well. So on the next slide, the purpose behind the plan, again, it's really highlight that it's a communications tool. Conceptually, I think it's easy to think of it as almost like a localized report card, for lack of a better way to say it, but it's really an interactive communications tool where our community can go on our website, engage with it, look at all the, at the various indicators or metrics that we're putting on there. And also, I want to note that this is just kind of the initial phase or the initial launch of this particular platform. The idea is that this is an organic platform that'll grow with us as a community and as a school district, and as we get better with telling our story using a data-driven approach, we'll be able to expand the metrics and the indicators that are on this particular platform and get even more detailed with our communications approach and how the strategic plan is working and what it actually looked like on our school campuses. The other piece is progress in terms of progress tracking or progress monitoring. There's a lot of platforms out there provided by the state of California. You're all familiar, I'm sure, with the California School Dashboard. CDE, or the California Department of Education, has another platform called Data Quest. Very comprehensive platforms, but also sometimes difficult to navigate for the average person in our community. It's difficult for me, and I've worked at CDE before. There's a lot of information there. If you're not 100% familiar with a lot of the terminology in the education world, there's a lot there, and it's also difficult to search if you're not familiar where to look for certain things. This is our attempt to really bring a lot of that into a more localized report and into a more localized platform. And again, we're using some of the information that exists on these other statewide platforms, but we also want to go further, because there's a lot of information and data that we collect here locally, and this is an opportunity for us to showcase that data as well. The other piece is that alignment piece. So we talked about the alignment with the strategic plan on that first slide, but this really is, again, conceptually, a great way to think of bringing the strategic plan out of a shelf that sits in someone's office into life, so that we can tell that story through the plan and how it's working for it. On the next slide, we wanted to highlight a little bit of the uses and the audiences and certain things that would define successes with this particular platform. I'm not gonna read all these individually, I'm just gonna leave them on the screen as I kind of highlight a couple. But in terms of uses, it's really intended for all of us to use, everyone in this room and everyone outside of this room. The audiences, again, it's very broad. I mean, it could be for the board, if you're making a presentation somewhere at a CSBA conference or with other colleagues in the industry. It could be for staff to report out to the board at board meetings about different things that are happening district-wide. It could be used at a principal's coffee, to showcase to families about different things that are happening in our schools and in our district. It's really meant to articulate and market our vision as a school district, again, where we are and where we're going, setting those benchmarks, and then being able to articulate those successes along the way. On the next slide, these are a series of static images. We don't have the means to necessarily do this in real-time or live demonstration from the podium. So we took screenshots of what this platform actually looks like. Now, when this platform is currently, as of tonight, live on our website, if you go to the district's website under the About District page, there is a tab or a page underneath that, nested underneath that list for District Indicator Platform. Now, when you click on that, it'll take you to this landing page, and this landing page is just a general About section. It talks a little bit about what the platform is, identifies the sources of information or the data that's depicted there, and you can see the portrait of a graduate and the goals for student success that are also articulated on the page. Those are directly from our strategic plan. And then the video in the middle is a promotional video about our district, which features the superintendent, parents, staff, and students as well. On the next slide, if you may, Mario. So when you click on the Indicators tab on the top left underneath the district logo, this is the top half of the Indicator Platform that you see once you're actually in the platform itself. We'll refer to each of these little rectangles as tiles. They're broken down by Indicator Group or Category, and the Indicator Group or Category is what you see at the top where it says WUSD by the numbers. The next one would be Equity Focus Teaching and Learning, or Pillar A in parentheses. The idea, again, is to show the direct correlation to our strategic plan by using the actual pillars identified in the plan as these indicator categories, and then listing out various metrics and data that apply to those particular pillars and the different categories. Again, it's about trying, being able to articulate the story of what's happening in our classrooms, on our campuses, in our district offices, through the strategic plan, and then articulating that vision all in one. The About section on the top is really just general information about the district. If you could go to the next slide as well, so imagine, these are screenshots again, so this would all be stacked on one page on a desktop device or a mobile device, right? So as you scroll further down on the page, this is the next section of tiles that you would see. Again, it's Pillar D directly from the plan. We added a new section that really isn't in the plan, but it's called Financial Stewardship. It's an opportunity for us to also articulate, you know, the spending of resources and the allocation of resources district-wide. So these are all various metrics that either live on different platforms hosted by the State Department of Education. There are different sources of information that we have here district-wide, and like I said, sometimes it's difficult to find all those in one place. And this is our attempt to put those or synthesize those in one bucket, in a sense, and then keep growing from here. You don't see categories for Pillar B and C from the strategic plan, because those are in development. Those will be in our Phase 2 articulation of what this platform can be. So as we continue getting better about how we're collecting data and information and how we're able to report that out to you and to our community, this platform will also grow with that process. On the next page, this is again, static images, so follow me from the top right down. Now, if you were to take one of those tiles that you saw on the previous screenshots, so this one would be graduation rates, it has the metric bolded in the 91% there. Each tile, most of the tiles, I should say, have a View Data button or a small circular icon with an I in the middle for information. If you were to click on that icon for more information, you'll see the very next larger rectangle with the description of what graduation rate is or how it's defined by the state of California. Now, if you were to click on the View Data button on the top right, it'll actually open up a new page, and it'll be the bar chart that you see down below. And that basically, again, defines what graduation rate is, but it shows the last five years of the graduation rate district-wide and in comparison to the statewide average as well. So again, it's really taking a lot of information that's in a lot of different places out there, bringing it to a more localized Indicator Platform so that we can interact with it, you can interact with it, our whole community can do that as well. It would be a little bit different if we could, you know, manipulate this live or if I could screen share from the podium, but we wanted to just show you in static images what that looks like. And if you're on there later tonight, you can click on any one of those tiles on the previous page. It opens up with descriptions. Most of them have other data sets inside. There's a few that don't, but it depends on what the metric is as well. On the next page, please. We wanted to just showcase what our next steps are. So tomorrow, we're hoping to send out a district-wide communication to all families and staff, essentially unveiling this to the community as we are tonight. This is a new platform. As I said, it's live on our website, on the district's website this evening. We also want to establish, and we will establish, ongoing meetings with various offices and departments within the school district to make sure that we are at the forefront of collecting this information, but also finding out if there's new ways or new metrics that we can incorporate. Like I said, this is meant to be an organic platform that grows with us as an organization. And along that process, too, we're going to be analyzing the effectiveness of it. We're gathering feedback from you, from our community, about what's working, what's not, and again, putting that right back into the system. And then, once that process is complete, it's really thinking about new features to implement along the way as well, to help us tell that story even better and more clearly. And that's what I have for you in terms of the platform, what it looks like. Like I said, you can, you can actually go online today on our website and look at it. It's available to anyone in the community. Happy to answer any other questions as well that you might have.
Okay, perfect. I do not see any public comment requests.
No public comments.
Okay, so then I'll open it up to members of the board. I think we are pulling it up, and we're looking at it in real-time, even though I know it's not there. So are there any questions from the board?
Just appreciate the user-friendly layout of it, just because the dashboards from the state are just funky, so to be able to highlight our, you know, our data very clearly.
Thank you for that.
Have something, trustee Basadi? Okay, I'll ask two pieces. One is when it says stability rate, and we might not have the opportunity to have this, but I'm wondering, since that's a student stability rate, if there's also a way to have staff stability rate? If that might be an indicator that we gather or could find, that might be interesting.
I can definitely find out.
Okay, thank you. And then my other piece is when you pull it up and look at it by number, I'm wondering if for our public, so when you go to indicators and you go to, say, math or reading, I'm wondering if for the public it might be confusing to see points below standard versus on the dashboard, it might say, you know, low, it has bars, and I'm just wondering, they don't have the context for that. So when I see this grid, it looks like we are above the state in this. Are we below? But it says points below, and so I'm just wondering if there's a way...
The higher is bound.
Yeah.
We can definitely look at how to articulate that better, because the state does specifically call out below standard or above standard, but we can, again, look at how they also depict that information on the California School Dashboard and see if there's a better way that we can showcase that information.
They do it this way.
They do it like, well, no, they do it with these bars.
But the higher is the worst, right? It's weird.
No, the higher is getting, is getting stronger. So it's low, medium, low, medium, high. So, but it is, yeah, the wording is just a little tricky, is all I think. And I don't, not that there's a solution now before it rolls out tomorrow, but some, just some feedback that it might not, there might not be enough context for families to understand what that means.
Understood, thank you.
Dashboards are tricky.
Very tricky.
I really like the financial part of it. I think that was really smart, too, adding that.
Yeah, it's, you know, oftentimes, there's so much happening district-wide, it's difficult sometimes to share our successes, and that's another avenue within the school district, where the district always has great audit reports, the bond designations are great, and it's a way to showcase those achievements as well and those successes, because they do speak to the efforts of the staff here as well.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, then, that takes us to our next information discussion item, is the update on results of the 2022-2023 California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress. That's our CASP with Autry Street, who's our Assistant Superintendent of Education Services, and Matt Ainsworth, who's our Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Professional Learning. Welcome.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent, staff. Thank you for being here. Tonight, Matt and I are hoping to effectively share with you some preliminary CASP data from last spring, showing some, showing where our students are, our current 4th through 12th graders are in terms of standards mastery on last year's grade level standards. So before we do that, I want to make sure that we're bringing to the forefront what we're all kind of collectively here to do. So Mario, if you can go to the first couple of slides, so just connecting to our equity principles, next slide, as well as our portrait of a graduate. Next slide, please, Mario. And in particular, tonight's presentation really does touch two of our four pillars, Equity Focus Teaching and Learning, and Learning and Growth Opportunities for all employees. So we've kind of structured tonight's presentation, one, giving you just a little bit of context and background about the CASP, and just mainly reminders on that, and then sharing our data compared to the previous school year, so '22-'23 compared to '21-'22 school year. And then I think, most importantly, we want to share how are we planning to respond to the data, some things that we're already doing, and some things that we're putting in motion this school year. And we have planned some strategic stop points for questions, but of course, as always, feel free to stop us if anything is unclear or you would like for us to elaborate. So next slide, please, Mario. So I think I've kind of gone over our objectives for tonight. Just one more point is we want to connect our action steps, so how we're responding to the data, to our strategic plan. Next, please. So just some quick reminders why we take the CASP, and again, CASP stands for California Assessment of Student Progress and Performance. It's administered annually, usually after 85% of the instructional year has passed. Our students in grades 3 through 8 and our 11th graders take it for ELA and math, and our 8th and 11th graders, I'm sorry, 5th and 11th graders take it for science as well. And it's really issued to, for several reasons, in particular, to... Um, in particular, to let us know how are students doing towards, how are they progressing towards mastery on grade level standards? Um, it gives teachers information about their current students um, as well as the performance of their um, students from the previous year. And we all know that it's one of the indicators that schools and school districts are um, measured by on the California dashboard. Next slide, please. So again, the results that we'll share tonight are preliminary. The state usually um, releases more formal um, or official results in October or November. Um, and then the California dashboard will be updated in December. Um, at that point, we can give you additional context by comparing our results to similar districts, other districts in our county, as well as um, how we did as compared to the state's results.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so we're going to start with um, a little background. Uh, tonight, we're going to be looking at um, our, our CASP results, but we wanted to make sure we're speaking the same language. Um, the percentages you're going to see throughout the slide, um, we have combined our standard met and standard exceeded. Uh, so the percentages you see um, are a combination of those students who are meeting or exceeding grade level standard. Uh, so this is our overall scores for last year. Um, on the left are English Language Arts. Uh, 41% of our students uh, met or exceeded standards. Uh, that was a 2% decrease from the 21-22 year. Um, on the right is our math results. Uh, again, 26% of our students met or exceeded standards and that was no change. It was uh, almost down to the percentage point exactly the same as our 21-22 result. Uh, so we wanted to give some historical context. So this is our results going back to uh, 2015. Um, the top bar represents our English Language Arts scores. Uh, on the far right is our 22-23 result of 41. Uh, you could see our results in 21-22 were 43% and that is our 2% drop that we saw. Um, again, you could see our math, 26% last year, uh, which was the same as our results in 22. Uh, there in the orange, uh, there's a, a couple of asterisks, uh, we just wanted to point out in 2020, uh, we did not give the CASP due to the pandemic. And then in the 2020-2021 school year, uh, districts were, provided the opportunity to give a local measurement and our third to eighth grade students took I-ready. So those are the results from the 21 school year. So we'll, we'll pause there um, for, for any questions about just the CASP in general or the big picture items uh, before we start diving into our grade level and our subgroup data.
Great. Any questions? All right, trustee Pasati?
Better. Um, so in reality, it's probably more of a fair assessment to say that. Can you go back one slide, Mario? That we've gone from probably 45% to 41% because of the COVID years. I mean, and we're, I mean, you're looking at a marginal decrease from 43 to 42, right? So I think the high point of 45 is kind of showing where we were, right? Then we had this stoppage. And a real wrench was thrown into the works. That's what I'm seeing, especially here in the math from 33 down to 26. So is, is that kind of what we're diagnosing this as, as more of a real? We're seeing, you know, the real effects start to play out of COVID through the long haul by seeing this decrease of, you know, over four, four years instead of just the two and a half years, three years?
Uh, sure. Um, I, 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 that would be my assumption as well. Um, our students who are taking CASP for the first time, third, fourth, fifth graders, the ones who are the hit, hit the hardest during COVID, you know, did not, weren't in the classroom, were to their kindergarten, first grade, their foundational years. Um, I would have expected uh, maybe a bigger drop in language arts, just about the early literacy. Um, hard to do that over, over Zoom as, as any teacher in the room would, would know. Um, but, but it appears that math was affected more. Um, and, and our, our guess is, is due to, due to the closure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Um, so uh, we wanted to look at some grade level data and, and these results, I just wanted to explain. Um, we're tracking students uh, as a cohort um, from the 21-22 school year to last year's results. So uh, the fourth grade bar, uh, that was last year's fourth grade students. Uh, 37% of them were at or above grade level um, or met or exceeded standards. Uh, the green little tick mark in the background, that was those students' results as third graders during the 21-22. So as third graders, they were 34% met or exceeded standards. As fourth graders, we had 37%. So we saw 3% growth um, in our fourth graders last year. Fifth grade students, 34% met or exceeded standards. As fourth graders the year before, they were also at that same 34%, so no change. Um, this is where we saw our biggest change. Uh, last year's sixth graders, 33% uh, met or exceeded standards. When that group was in fifth grade, um, they were actually at 45%. So we saw a 12% drop with that cohort. Um, and again, sorry, these are language arts scores. Uh, seventh graders, um, last year, uh, there was 44% uh, met or exceeded standards. That was an 8% increase from that group as sixth graders. So, so tremendous growth there. And then our eighth grade students last year, 45%, which was no change from their results as seventh graders. On this chart, you're not going to see third or 11th grade results. Uh, they didn't have a cohort to track because those students did not take CASP the year before. Um, the next slide is similar data, but this is for our math results. So again, we're tracking students from their third grade year to fourth grade. Um, as fourth graders last year, 34% met or exceeded standards. Uh, that was a decrease of 1% from their scores as third grade. You can see in fifth grade, another sizable drop, uh, 19% of our fifth grade students met or exceeded standards, which was down 9% from that same group as fourth graders. Uh, sixth grades, uh, 20% met or exceeded standards, which was a 3% decrease from their results as fifth graders the year before. Uh, our seventh graders, um, uh, again, uh, are just a really strong showing from that group. 23% met or exceeded standards. That is 2% personal growth for that group as, from sixth graders. And then eighth grade students, 24%, which is a 1% drop from their seventh grade. So um, there, there's a lot of ways to measure these. You can measure the 21-22 fifth grade to 22-23 fifth grade, but we, we find a lot of value in, in tracking the students and finding out their growth as, as we go. Um, so one other grade level measure, um, as uh, Assistant Superintendent Street mentioned, was the CASP test. Fifth, eighth and 11th grade students take this. Um, so we are not, obviously, we're not monitoring a cohort here um, because it's a totally different group of students, but um, we're still showing change over time. So last year, fifth grade students, we had 19% met or exceeded. The previous year's fifth grade, totally different group of students, uh, they were at 26%, so a 7% drop in our fifth grade CASP scores. Um, but you see our eighth and 11th, um, both had an increase, eighth grade, uh, 27%, which was up five from the previous year's eighth graders and 11th grade. 30% met or exceeded, which was an increase of 8%. So I know it's a lot of percent, a lot of numbers, so we'll do another pause um, before um, we go into student groups, but just any questions about grade level groupings?
Questions? Question? Trustee Kirk Coffee?
Yeah, I just have one. Okay. And this is just because sixth grade class, who's now seventh grade class, they're phenomenal. We pick at those teachers' brains to find out what it is that's going on in that particular thing. And I'm only saying because it was increased for all areas. Is there something there that we can possibly, you know, tap into?
That, that is the exact model. We want to look at the asset model and find out what's working. Um, use our PLC model to, to, to collaborate and explore those practices. Um, you know, what were their, their common assessments? Um, how did they progress monitor throughout the year um, to, to achieve those results? So it, it shows that it's possible and so we want to take those best practices and use them everywhere.
See Pasati?
Yeah. So just the opposite of her question. Um, it seems as though fifth and sixth grade struggle. Um, I, my question would be, um, we would have I-ready numbers to kind of sort this out to figure out, you know, we, we have, we have our own assessment tool that should kind of parallel the CASP, right? We should be going, you know, we should be knowing ahead of time of what the CASP was going to look like and kind of maybe getting forewarning. Did we see that with our I-ready numbers?
So, so we do have those results of, of the correlation between the, the third I-ready diagnostic, which was given in March um, to CASP. Um, I, I would say that our level of data analysis using that information um, and putting into practice, the whole reason of the I-ready window um, being there in March was to give us, you know, a month head start to be able to identify those areas of need. Um, I, I would say that the, the, the trends in sixth grade are, are pretty common. That's, that's a big transition year for students. Um, you know, moving on to middle school for the first time. Uh, but, but that's, that, that, that is the exact point of that I-ready diagnostic and we have those results. I mean, we're looking to possibly do a, a board study session to dig deeper into that data um, to be able to monitor that.
And, and don't get me wrong, this is not like a critique. I'm not, I hate standardized tests with a passion because they don't work for my kid. They don't work for a lot of people's kids. So I just want to make sure that we're getting the most out of our analysis of them and maybe kind of if we have to dig deep to, to see if there's even flaws in the system that are producing this because it's in the same grade level every time or, or what have you. Uh, because it doesn't seem, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like this should be happening, happening statistically at the same site every single year. So I'm just kind of curious, is, is there something else that we're not seeing? Um, and you know, maybe we do need to have a study session as to delve deeper into, why is it? Well, the previous fourth grade or why is it that is creating this gap at fifth grade? Or same with sixth grade, because now there's a gap at fifth and sixth grade because you have to catch up, right? Like, I, I'm just curious, what, what's, you know, what's the analysis telling us?
Based on our, um, going back to your question about the correlation between the third um, I-ready administration in spring versus how kids performed on CASP. Um, we do have school sites working on, looking at, is there a correlation? I know that just from a preliminary analysis, it looks like there wasn't as close of a correlation as we thought and hoped. Kids did a lot better on I-ready than they did on CASP. Um, but I think we'll answer some of your questions as we get into how we're responding to the data. Um, and to Matt's point about a study session with the board to go deeper into um, some of the, the data points.
I have um, just a brief uh, question. I don't know the answer to. Um, and data is always tricky with our kids because they're not, they're kid, they have so many variables, right? So we can't, or how we look at it, you can't really compare apples to apples, whether it's fifth grade to the next fifth grade or if it's kids changing. So um, I appreciate looking at it this way. I'm wondering if you have seen or if they have state averages that are similar to this. I'm wondering if in some of these places across the state, like there is a dip, as you pointed to, sometimes we have um, you know, jumps within content. And so it would be interesting to know um, if there are trends in the state too, and maybe not in this moment, but maybe during that study session too.
Yeah, I think once we have um, the, the California dashboard released in December and even before then, once um, um, results are made public, we can then compare our results to how did other districts do? How did other um, similar schools do? Um, and how do we measure ourselves against um, the state's results?
Something vice president Wong?
Yeah. No, I, I appreciate the data, but um, also just a lot of work ahead of you. Right? So even though there's progress, that's 26%, that's 36%. Again, I know that we, like, going post-COVID standard I test, we were like, okay, that's not kind of the way we want to go. What's important to me are the next few slides related to equity and how do you move that forward? But I, I appreciate the question about the trend data that is forthcoming at our study session about what is, you know, what is the rest of the state looking like? But I also acknowledge that this is, yeah, it, it, it's a road ahead of us.
Any other questions before we move into the next section, which really focuses on our student groups?
Think you're good to go.
Okay, next slide, please, Mario. Okay, so what we have in front of us is a list of our students who did take the assessment last year, um, organized from greatest to least in terms of numbers of kids who identify or who belong to that, to that particular student group. So on the left, you see a list by ethnicity, percent, and then the number in parentheses is the actual number of kids that were um, a part of the, a little bit over 3,000 kids who took the assessment last spring. And then on the right, um, for lack of a better term, other reporting groups. So our socio-economically disadvantaged students, English learners, students with disabilities and our gifted and talented um, students, identified gifted and talented students. And just please note that a student could live, right, in, in more than one of the um, categories, something on the left and something on the right. Um, and so the next few slides will show student performance based on these student groups. So here we'll start with um, ELA, English Language Arts, starting with our largest student group. Um, so again, like Matt pointed out, the number in white text inside the um, bar shows this year's, I'm sorry, 2023's results. And then if it has a, a bar, a red bar or a green plus, that shows um, last spring's performance compared to the previous year. So for our Hispanic Latino group, 31% scored, met or exceeded, and that was the same as the previous year. So no change there. For our um, students who identify as white, 56% scored, met or exceeded, and that's a 2% drop from the previous year. Our Asian students, 42% met or exceeded, and that's a 9% decrease from the previous year. Two or more races, 54%, and that was no change from the previous year. Um, our African-American students, 26%, which is a 4% decrease compared to the 2021-22 school year. Our Filipino students, 54% met or exceeded, and that's a 20% decrease from the previous school year. Um, our last two and smallest um, student groups, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islanders, 35% scored, met or exceeded, and that's a 9% decrease from the previous year. Our American Indian, Alaskan native, 14%, um, and that's a 13% drop from the previous year. And then on the next slide, um, we'll talk about our groups categorized, categorized by ethnicity, but for math. And so um, Hispanic and Latino, 16% scored, exceeded, met or exceeded, and that was no change from the previous year. Our white students, 41%, and that was actually a 2% increase from the previous year. Um, our Asian students, 29%, which demonstrates a 3% drop from the previous year. Two or more races, 36%, which is um, a 3% increase from the previous year. Our African-American students, 18%, which is a 6% increase um, compared to the Our African-American students, 18%, which is a 6% increase compared to the previous school year. Filipino students, 43% with a 3% decrease from the previous year. Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander students, 24%, which includes a 3% decrease from the previous year. American Indian, Alaskan Native, no, no student in that subgroup scored, met or exceeded on math for last school year, which is a 13% drop from the previous year. The next two slides will focus on those other three, the reporting groups. So socioeconomically disadvantaged, English learners, students with disabilities, and gifted and talented students. So of course, these groups we know are made up of all the ethnicities. So our largest group here, 31%, which is a 2% drop from the previous year. Our English learners, 7%, which includes a 4% increase from the previous year. Students with disabilities, 10%, which includes a 2% increase. And our gifted and talented students, 92%, which includes a 5% increase from, compared to the previous year. And then I'll go into math for the same reporting groups. So 17% for our students who are categorized as socioeconomically disadvantaged, and that's a 1% increase from the previous year. Our English learners on math, 6%, which demonstrates a 2% increase. Students with disabilities, 6%, no change there. And then our gifted and talented students, 82%, which includes a 6% increase compared to the previous year. And I think this might be a good stopping point if there are any questions.
Can I ask you, and you don't have to do it today, you have to, in, in the memo, and I saw me talking to Dr. Hildreth, is data for students in foster care and then data disaggregated by students experiencing homelessness? In, in part, I ask because that's aligned to our statutory obligations under LCFF. Is there a reason why those cohorts were not included?
I don't want to assume, but it could be that, that the number of students who fit into that category, it may have been a numerically insignificant number. So usually it's like less than 5% or 10% of your population. But I'm not quite sure if the state-
I mean, you have Native American students, so I would imagine-
That's true.
I do know that you have more-
That's true.
Students experiencing homelessness and students in foster care than Native American students.
I haven't, I haven't seen it reported out for them, but I know the dashboard includes that data point.
I'm pretty sure we have more students in foster care.
We should probably, we can probably get that to you.
Yeah. And again, y'all mostly know my history related to students in foster- It's just important for me, top of mind, again, because we have a statutory obligation, to disaggregate that and look at it also strategically. My other question is, just your reflections as you disaggregate this data? I mean, you, you may have heard me a little bit gasp of like zero percent, none of our Native American, Indigenous students, right? Like, wow. Right, like, and then even though, you know, the, the percentages of increase and decrease, as we think about a portrait of a graduate and, and how we're rooted in equity and all of that, just thoughts and reactions on, what are your ahhs, like, as you look at? I mean, just like, yeah, I just, it's really an honest, like, again, I already said, like, yes, we all don't like standardized tests, but what standardized tests do do? Highlight the inequities that exist in our system.
My ahhs, it's, it's twofold. One, we experienced a lot of successes with certain student groups where we saw them outperform the district, district averages, which we'll come to later in the, in the presentation. I think sometimes it's a matter of, do teachers, do we even know who the students are that identify as some of these categories? But there's a lot of work for us to do. I know our staff works incredibly hard. We'll address some of it when we get to our responses to the data. We, we really want to look at alignment. Is what we're doing in the classrooms and at school sites and at the district office aligned to supporting standards-based instruction? So are we teaching what the state has told us is important enough to assess? And how much time are we-
Without teaching to a test.
Without teaching to the test, absolutely. So those are just some of my takeaways from, or initial responses to the data.
It seems like you, you have some thoughts too. I, I'm looking at, again, you know, Matt was my principal, so I'm like, okay, I know that face.
Audrey took most of them, but I'll, I'll, I'll share my thoughts as well. So looking at the math, can you go forward to, for, for these subgroups to have growth for English learners, I think possibly for the first time since, since pre-COVID? That was, that was such a, such a, I know we didn't grow overall in math, but, but last year was, was a rocky math year anyway. We were, you know, piloting a new program in K5. And I went down to the numbers because I wanted to see, our percentages were the same. We tested 30 less kids overall and 10 more, like if we're talking bodies, 10 more students were meeting or exceeding. So if there was a slight dip or line growth, so I, I was just really proud of the effort in math and, and our math task force and our, our department leads and our, our math program really is, is, is changing. Last year was the beginning and this year we're really diving in. So that, that, that gave me hope that, that the discussion around math discourse and the standards of mathematical practice are, are working and having, having an impact, especially for our students. I mean, and, but clearly my, my initial aha is the numbers are too low, especially for, for our neediest students on, on this slide. And so as, as we're going to share in a few slides, our response to this data, everything we do is, is to, as Audrey said, get students exposed to their grade level content. I think for the last few years, we know, we've heard learning loss or unfinished learning. I think a lot of third grade teachers were having to backfill in a lot of first and second grade standards. And then our question is, well, when were they going to learn third grade standard? And that became a, a duty of the fourth and fifth grade teachers. And the can keeps getting kicked down the road with our focus this year on, if you're a third grade teacher, we're going to scaffold up and teach third grade standards to make sure when the students sit down to take this test, they, they will have every opportunity that they've been exposed to every part of this test. Not teaching to the test, but teaching the standards that, that are, are necessary and the priority for that grade level. So we're, we're, I know optimism is not a strategy, but we are very, very optimistic. We're very optimistic with our, with our focus on high-quality first instruction this year. It doesn't have a great acronym, HQFI, doesn't really roll off the tongue, but high-quality first instruction is, is our ticket.
I figured out.
Well, I think that belief is like one of the number one ways we talked about earlier was to, you know, lead students is to believe that they can do it first and foremost, right? Okay, Clerk Coffey, did you have something?
Yes, I just had a question on like the ethnicities and the reporting groups. Like, how did you pull these, like Hispanic, Latino, white? In the sense of like, how did you know that they were identifying as white? How did you know that they were identifying as Asian?
So these numbers are taken directly out of, out of our Student Information Service and CalPads. And the, the reports we run, these ones aren't manual. The, the one that Vice President Wong was asking about, about families in transition or foster youth, traditionally we have to manually calculate those numbers until they come out on the dashboard. That wasn't offered on our report. So these ones were, were generated from, taken directly from CASP into our-
Then that would answer your, yeah, because that's where I was trying to feel like, maybe there's a reason why. And can the, as you, they can be duplicated? So one can say that they're Hispanic and white, and that's where you get your two or more races?
Yeah.
Well, because, I mean, I'm just thinking of, when I look at, well, no, but I'm saying, I see that because it, it says ethnicity for one box, and then the next box says race. So his ethnicity is Hispanic, I know because I mark these boxes all the time. And so the top one, it says Hispanic, Latino, Mexican of ethnic heritage. And then your next box is what is your race? And it doesn't say on there Hispanic or Latino. It's, only gives you an option of white. So my question is, the reason why I'm bringing that up is because I, I mean, then would my student then be that 7% if they were part of this? Because the boxes that we pick, even though, I'm just saying, throwing it out there because that's-
Yeah.
But I know, now we know why the other stuff, it had to be manual.
Yeah, so I, I, I see a lot of things that are little wins and, and, and things that were, where we've gained, and I want to celebrate those things. Again, we've also seen areas where we've slid a little bit. One of the things that I've continually said about this test that I'm, I'm kind of a broken record, I think I say it every year, but that I dislike about it, is that it shows that we're not meeting standards on basically every level. You know, we're not even 50%. That's right, except for gate kids. Gate kids were knocking it out of the ballpark, right? So to that extent, like, while I understand, I understand it's hard to get, you know, everybody to meet and exceed standards, especially after COVID. What are, what, what are our strategies to kind of get us to the point where at least 50% of our kids? Right, like, what are we doing? What, what, what's, what have been, you know, I'm not an educational leader. I'm not an expert in this. I, I want to hear from you guys both. How are we planning to at least get, you know, some major improvements based off a test that I hate?
We can, we have two more slides, and then we'll dive into what are we doing about it?
Okay, so a few highlights. And so we really, again, we wanted to look at our, our student groups who outperformed the, the district results. So again, our district results was we went, we went down 2% in ELA and had no change in math. And so, so for example, the students with disabilities at Riverbank, that student group showed 5% growth from 21, 22 to 22, 23 in English Language Arts. And so you could see the schools here, the Hispanic students at River City High School, 7% growth in math. Again, this is a district-wide 0% growth, so that, that student group. So this, this was a really fun slide to put together and, and being able to, to celebrate. Washington Middle College High, Yolo High School, and the Virtual Academy did not have enough students test and, and their grade levels to be able to have this disaggregated data. But we will have highlights to share with those site principals so they could share that with their staff as well.
I know that it's not a place for questions, but I just want to commend you on putting this slide together. It's hard to be in the audience on these conversations and how different spaces we're all in and different challenges. And I just think that this is really great to have a, a slide like this. And I want to thank you for giving a shout out to all of our schools.
We also have some, some glows, again, some areas to celebrate and some grows areas that we're going to continue to focus on. So one, one group that we haven't particularly shouted out because they didn't appear on our grade level is 11th graders across the district in Language Arts, 58% met or exceeded standards. So that is, that is Yolo, Washington Middle College, and River City. So just a tremendous job by, by that group of 11th graders, including my, my youngest, so good job, Avery. So looking at our, our, our schools as a whole, seven out of the 11 schools maintained or approved, improved the percentage of students who met or exceeded in math. Looking at, at our, at our student groups, seven out of the eight schools had students of English learners improved and, who met and exceeded in Language Arts. And five out of the eight schools had students with disabilities showed improvement in their met or exceeded percentage, and that was based off the year before. So again, just, just really celebrating the, like, these are big wins, you know, of, of groups that traditionally have not shown growth. And these, these groups, you know, outperformed the district average. So again, just really proud of the effort from both the, the staff and, and the students on the- I'm going to let Audrey talk about the growth.
So some opportunities for improvement, our, what we're calling our grows. And this is just a few of them, few of them. So eight out of our 11 schools in English Language Arts, we saw a decrease in the percent of students who met or exceeded, or again, for ELA. And five out of the eight schools in ELA, again, we saw that our students with disabilities decreased the percent of, the percent who met or exceeded standards. In five of the eight schools, in both content areas, ELA and math, we saw a decrease in proficiency for students who fall into the socioeconomically disadvantaged. So those are some areas of focus, some real opportunities to, to, to improve. And like we've been alluding to all evening, so what are we doing about, about what this data is telling us? And so we want to start with that pillar C, investing in our staff, a real focus on professional learning. First and foremost, we want to make sure that our instructional practices improve and are aligned to standards-based instruction. So we've made investments with Solution Tree, National Center for Urban Transfer, Urban School Transformation, INCUS, Unbound Ed Standards Institute. And really here, these three are connected because the POC, Professional Learning Community Structure, is really what we're using to strengthen, how does equity show up in our classrooms? Is our instruction aligned to standards? What are the common assessments that we've agreed to use as a grade level or as a department? So Solution Tree, that investment has helped us with the structure, which I believe the investment started last year. And then sort of the content of what we're doing in that structure, we'll have some partnerships with INCUS as well as Standards Institute. So we had quite a few people attend institutes this summer, as well as one more in Stockton just a few weeks ago. And just to highlight one additional aspect of our focus, instructional focus, is again, looking at, is the instruction, are the tasks that are being put in front of students, the assessments that they're being asked to, to, to perform on? Is it aligned to standards? Is it grade level? Is the instruction in the classroom engaging, affirming, and meaningful? So that really is kind of what we want to make sure we're striving for this school year. And I'll let Matt talk a little bit in more detail about professional learning, other learning, professional learning.
Thank you. So in addition to the work with our partners, we will continue to provide professional learning to staff with a focus on differentiation strategies, which is promoting that intervention during first instruction. Obviously this year, like I mentioned, a focus on math. And a real, real key component of that is the standards of mathematical practices from kindergarten through 12th grade, regardless of the content. The mathematical practices are, are the tools behind good math understanding. This year, again, our first year of our K5 math adoption, I'm so proud of our kindergarten through fifth grade team. Every single teacher attended, was fully trained for their initial training by the seventh day of school this year. So they came in over the summer, they, they stayed late after school during the first week of school. So just a, a great job by them and a, and a really smooth start to that adoption. And this year- And this year we are piloting for adoption for both 6, 8 and 9, 12 math as well. So again, a big focus on math. And then continuing our work with equitable grading. Last year, every single sixth through eighth grade site team made site agreements about equitable grading practices. And we're really excited to, to move that work to the high school this year to make similar site agreements.
All right, so in addition to focusing on professional learning, we are ensuring that our, the, the first instruction that students receive from their classroom teacher, what is, what is the quality? What are some changes we can make? What are some refinements that we can make to maximize our time with, with students during the school day? So again, making sure our common assessments and classroom instruction are aligned to grade level, state standards. And we are definitely, Matt and I have done, have had a lot of conversations about progress monitoring. How do we know where our kids are? Let's not wait until the CASP assessment to know what their strengths are. What are the gaps that need to be filled and how do we, how do we fill that? And so speaking of gaps, Matt will talk a little bit about some investments for intervention.
Thank you. Yeah, so obviously the high-quality first instruction from that classroom teacher at, at grade level is, is the goal. But we do know that students struggle. Our, our data shows that, that we do still have gaps. And so targeted intervention is definitely a priority as we continue to move. So, so really the, the focus on supporting students with that effective intervention services based on their individual needs as well as an investment in, in additional support staff. This year we have added three more intervention specialists at our K-8s, two literacy coach positions and a teacher on special assignment in math to again, carry that, that work to support teaching and learning in the classroom. Okay, so this is, as, as much as, you know, the, the challenges around, around standardized testing, we, we, we definitely want to look at our practices and, and how we are rolling out these tests. And so a few changes and adjustments we're looking to make this year are around student goal setting and progress monitoring. As Trustee Pizzotti had mentioned about using that iReady data and having data talks with students following their iReady so they know their scores, they know their areas of challenge. And obviously their, their areas of strength as well that we could build on. Reviewing CASP results with students prior to their, to this year's CASP. Let them know clearly how they did last year and if, you know, if they took it the year before, their areas of growth and obviously their areas of strength and be able to set student goal setting. So, so they can set a target for themselves and, and really own their learning for their CASP results. We're also looking at developing some scheduling changes. One thing I've, I've already shared with the board this year, we've reduced our number of iReady diagnostic.
As moms, as humans, we thank you.
Yeah, the fact that they still say one-hour test is, it's not a one-hour test. So, so we've reduced it because what, one thing that we felt last year is, obviously this, we're, you know, training for a marathon and we feel like students hit their stride when they took that iReady in March. And we want them to hit their stride when they take CASP. So this year they're going to take two iReadies, one that they are, tomorrow is the, the last day of the window and then another one in February. Teachers are provided the option to do a CASP or an iReady after CASP as, you know, end of year data. But, but that'll give us beginning of year data, growth goal and the growth data in the middle of the year after the test in February to give us March and April to use that information as we prefer, prepare for CASP.
I need to ask you a quick question is because I'm, I haven't taken the CASP before. So is it a timed test?
Is untimed and we tell them.
CASP is untimed.
CASP is untimed.
Okay.
Do not finish on Thursday.
I was about to lose my beans if that were, if it were a timed test.
Not timed. The only, the only time commitment is it for the performance task is you have 10, 10 days to finish it. So definitely as much time as they need to take that.
But let's be honest, no kid wants to sit on the same test for 10 days.
Yeah, fair.
There's taking your time and then there's.
Sometimes they're on vacation or they get sick.
Yeah, and so, and, and if the window closes, it's, it's a few clicks and we can reopen it for them. So one thing that, that has changed on CASP, pre-COVID, the, the computer adaptive test was, was 40 something questions long. That has been scaled back to about 22. The performance task is still the same length. But traditionally we've built these three or four-week-long windows for, for CASP. And so usually we have to start right after spring break to make sure we have time. Knowing that these tests are shorter, we're going to push back the beginning of our CASP window to give teachers more instruction time and more review time following spring break. So CASP probably won't start till May this year. So I, I consider that a win. We've been working with River City as well. They, they've traditionally taken their CASP before spring break due to, due to midterms and AP testing. I'm working with, with the high schools to realign that to make sure we, we maximize our instructional time. And then, and then how are our tests scheduled during that window to make sure students have enough time? They don't feel rushed, but they also don't feel, you know, that test fatigue. So we're really excited about that. Really, really leading up to CASP testing is that we're.
Hi, Pot. I'm sorry.
Virginia has a question.
I'm sorry, and there's a lot of breathing over here.
And I am like trying to breathe it out. I'm trying to box breathe right now. Okay, so you said that you can reopen it if it closes with a click of a button? Teachers know this?
Yeah, the teachers would let their administrators know my, my student's test expired. I, I'm the clicker of the button and so it's more than just a click.
And the reason why I'm asking is because my son has retaken this test. This is going to be his second time because it closed on him. He freaked out because it closed and we didn't know that we could click a button.
Are you thinking about iReady? iReady, I got no button clicks.
Okay, I don't know. I'm just saying some diagnostic test.
I, I ready if you, if you, if it closes, you got to return.
Like can we, can we give them that time? Like, is there anything? Because I, my, it stressed my kid out. I, I know you guys, when you got a kid who is on that spectrum, that is where I was for the past, for this weekend. So when I said I was exhausted, that's my exhaustion. That's where it was coming from. So.
iReady is outside of our control. CASP.
So can we talk to iReady people?
I, I do. That's so our, our, our recommendation is that if it's, if it's that, that bunch of a strain on, on a student that, and they've, they've taken it, like, we can find another measure rather than making the student sit in front of a computer for another couple hours. So we'll make sure that, that they know. No, no problem. It's okay. My, my impassioned.
But I think, you know, you, you raise a good point though, with students with special needs who actually need more time. It seems like it actually creates more anxiety than it does would be, I mean, it's some data. It could possibly create more anxiety.
Right.
Yeah, to your point, like, so how would a parent then ask for an alternative? Is, was probably the, the question.
Yeah, that is the question.
Yeah, I, I, I think, yeah, communicating with your, your, your child's teacher would be the way to go. All right, so leading up to CASP testing, we're encouraging all sites to create a level of excitement and energy for CASP. We want the entire testing window to be a celebration of learning. Encourage all sites to have a, a culture of an exceeded state of mind with rallies, raffles, growth parties, level jumper parties, whatever it is to create a level of excitement around the test. It's a, it's the culmination of a year's worth of teaching and learning. And we want students, staff, families, community to know that it's, it's not about, it's not about perfection. It's about progress. And, and all, all we truly want is for our students to do their best on the test and be able to show what they know. So we're really excited to make CASP not something that they have to do, but something that they get to do to be able to show next year's teacher, this is what I know from the grade level that I was just in. And so we're, we're really, we're really excited about, about our, our changes and, and our charge. All of our, our site principals are here tonight. Obviously we know that this is, this is very important to them. And so I'll, I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Street.
Next slide please, Mario. So just before we go, we just wanted to make sure that you all understand that this is not the last time we'll bring student achievement data in front of you. This school year, the state has actually added an additional requirement that in February, before February 28th, we bring you data on a local measure. So it may be iReady or something else. But once the dashboard is released in December, we'll have some comparison data, us versus other similar districts, the county, the state. And I think that's pretty much it. So are there any final questions or?
First I'll say that there are no public comments. So I want to confirm that. Okay, so now I'll open it up to.
My daughter still remembers your pizza parties. So that it is, and, and at the same time, there were, you know, I recall at the end of school year last year, there were concerns that only certain kids also got acknowledged. And so how do we do that for the entire, like a celebration, all kids finished versus like the, you know, the jumpers and all that, which is important, like I said. But my, my child still remembers that and she's a moody teenager and I think she was like very young. But so, wanted to take note.
Okay, Trustee Pizzotti?
So since the K through five grading scale is, you know, it says standards met or standard is exceeded, right? Or then nearly met or needs improvement, right?
For CASP?
No, for grades, just for grades in general in K through five. Can we use our grading scales and looking at those to provide a backup analysis on certain, you know, because we have third, fourth and fifth grade levels here? Can, is there a way to do some even deeper dive, you know, digging to find out? Hey, is our CASP numbers really actually measuring up with what our teachers are telling us? Because, and this is what I hate about CASP and iReady and every other assessment that we do. It's one snapshot on one day, you know, or maybe 10 days, however, whatever. But it's one snapshot in time, right? Like for my kid squirrel, right? Like she may be looking out the window and not paying attention for a good half. And then realizing, oh, hey, I got to finish, right? So knowing what the teachers know about each kid certainly I think is more beneficial than what a test would. So while this is great, so the rest of the state can, you know, analyze us and dictate to us, I want to know from, you know, as a school board perspective and as we're going to provide oversight by, you know, showing where the resources, resources need to go and, and what kind of PD do we need to do and, and all that type of stuff. I want to know more detail about, you know, what have our kids really look like? Because these are a very broad oversh, you know, overview of one day. And, and I'd rather see, you know, because you can just go through, you know, areas and do a search and run through and say, hey, what is fifth grade, what's the fifth grade average of, you know, the grades? Are always met or exceeded or, or what? Think that's something that maybe as we delve into these numbers a little bit more and do a little more analysis, we should consider. I don't want to make more, more work for you guys, but I think it would be something that would be beneficial. Because I don't want us to have these numbers that say, you know, half of our, or less than 40% of our kids aren't meeting standard. When our teachers are telling us, yeah, they are. That's not true. It's on this particular day they.
Thank you for that. And we do recognize that this is one measure of our students' progress towards standards mastery. And we can definitely include grades, teacher grades as an additional measure when we're looking at exactly where our kids are. And we can include that in a board study session, yes, or when we're reporting other local measures in this school year.
Do you have any questions? Okay. I think it is important and I appreciate colleagues on the board and the perspectives here of not only families, but also families who have students with unique needs, families who, whether it be learning disabilities or the anxiety or other pieces are very much, is a snapshot of what all of our families are dealing with in the district. And I think it's important. I think that your steps that you have for next steps sound really good. And I, and I appreciated hearing you talk about the way you're going to adjust maybe the testing window and all of those pieces, which I think is, is a simple tweak that might really help in this process. Just a word of caution or recommendation as you talk about the data chats, which I think are very important for kids to understand where am I, what's happening? I've seen it done before with iReady is when it, it shows you, there's a data sheet, I believe, that even comes with their program. And it's like, I am this number and then I want to be this number. But that doesn't really work for a kid. And so I just want to make sure that when you're talking to teachers about data chats for kids, that it's in a way that works for them. Because I know like my own daughter who scored very, you know, she, she was very successful in her numbers, but she was crying and upset and wonderful teacher, wonderful, you know, everything about that. But she just felt like she didn't do enough and she didn't, there was just so much anxiety that came home. And so just how those talks happen, I think, especially by grade level sometimes. And we don't always know because we see our kids in front of our face and they seem okay. And then they go home and fall apart sometimes. So just a word of caution of what that looks like for them. And then also another piece as you look at what are your needs and looking at professional development. And I would urge you to look at what many teachers have asked me about, which is some phonics instruction and having a phonics screener. I know I pulled phonics screeners and I just did them, you know, myself at home to say, look, we're okay, you know, for my child that was worried. But I think having a phonics screener gives such good information because iReady does give you a snapshot. But it's, it's not really dialed down if we're talking about an early reader and what they really need. So having that I think would be a really helpful tool. And then if there's some skill with how do I now teach phonics instruction or meet these needs with where they're missing? Because that can be a heavy lift. So. Does that sound fair? Okay, and then it looks, sounds like for next time when we talk about our numbers and just for the public, it's not a gotcha. We appreciate you all and all, all that you did. But our homeless numbers, based on this, the dashboard, you know, which has older numbers. But here it's 87 students and our foster youth 58. So they're both around, you know, the 1%. But I do think to Vice President Wong's point, that, that's really important data for us as we're honing in. And so if we can have that for in the future, I think it would be important. And then again, just kudos for doing a presentation in a way that I think was really well done and sensitive to all of the needs that we have. We got a lot of good information here and I think it was done in a way that was respectful of all the people working hard. So thank you for that. And to our admin, thank you. You are the faces of the school. You are who our family see every day. They drop off our kids, our kids see your faces first and foremost. And all of the heavy lifting is not done here. It's done on the school sites and, and what you're doing every day. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all the work that you're doing with our kids. We really appreciate you and all of that. And the teachers and the classified employees, our instructional, it's just the work of everyone. And so we recognize that and thank you for giving your evening to be here as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. You all can get home by nine o'clock. We'll be soon to follow. All right, that takes us now to the consent agenda. And we have no changes to that. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, moved by Vice President Wong, seconded by Trustee Pizzotti, all in favor? I too vote aye. Thank you. Okay, let's, well, wait a second. Everyone worked really hard all day long. And what is the priority for them to be ready tomorrow? And we appreciate all of the cabinet too, that have to stay with us. Okay, so we pulled action item P1 as a reminder. So we're at action. Okay. So we pulled action item P1 as a reminder. So we're at action item two. And that is the approval of the contract with Network Management Cooperation for the upgrading of bells, clocks, and speakers at Stonegate Elementary School. And that is with our chief business officer, Monique Stovall.
Good evening. And I'll just say, I don't mind that everyone left. They've had a really busy day. I see myself as the supporting cast, so that's okay. I'm, thank you. And this is also for, to support her school. Thank you. Thank you very much for staying. No, it's, I take absolutely no offense at all. I'm happy to work behind the scenes. If their day is working smoothly, then I know that we've done our job. So this evening, we're asking for approval for a contract with Network Management Corporation to upgrade the bells, clocks, and speakers at Stonegate Elementary School. This is part of our focus on safety and then also making sure that our facilities are in good repair and they reflect how we feel about our students and staff. This is indeed to upgrade the system from an analog system to a digital system, basically bringing it into the modern age. We most recently installed this type of system at our Westmore Oaks Elementary School. And that was during the modernization. As we move forward with assessing all of our facilities, we see this as the standard for our, I always want to say bells and whistles, but our bells, clocks, and speakers at our schools so that we can make sure that we have reliable and up to date and systems that are easy to use by our site-based staff. The estimated cost for this upgrade is $97,143, and we ask for your approval.
There any, I have no public comment. And are there any questions or comments? I, do you have one or are you going to make a motion?
I want to, I have a question. I think analog clocks are important, even although they should work.
Can we do a work order for City Hall?
But I'm, I'm only bringing this up because, you know, we teach the, teach kids to be able to read a clock. Will there be some throughout, you know, the campus? Because it is important, since we do, it is, you know, a lesson on how to tell time. That, that's my only, my only maybe ask, I guess.
Okay.
That's it.
I'm not sure, but I can absolutely look into it unless our.
The, the new clocks do, they do have like a little scrolling on it. So when there is a silent lockdown, if you're doing that, if there's like, say, an active shooter, it will flash a light and something will scroll along the bottom without blaring a sound. So again, and it's all digital. And because it's doing from the center console, it could be programmed by the secretary or whoever it is. So.
Oh, so we won't have clocks?
No, there's no.
Then we're really not going to have clocks.
We won't have, we won't have analog clocks. But again, target $8.
That's true. I don't know how to be a teacher without a clock.
Yeah, I can do that. So.
Okay. Indeed, you know, if a school or a teacher wants that as a teaching aid, as, then we can absolutely supply that, which I think is a great idea.
Yeah, just don't make the teachers pay more.
No, no. Well, that's why I said we will supply it.
Well, that sounds like a much better clock than just a, you know, digital clock. I thought it was just a digital clock, but it's got some bells and whistles.
It does. Bells and whistles, yes.
I'm actually glad you asked that because I hadn't. And then can I just ask on timeline? This is going to go in, how long is this going to take? And will it disrupt student learning or?
They will do it after hours.
Okay.
And soon as it's an approval, I'll reach out to them and we'll see soon as, how soon as we can get it done. Because Stonegate's been out for, how long have you been out? A year and a half without. So they've been doing.
Out of sound?
They've been doing alternatives for notification. So now with this in place, they'll have speakers indoor, outdoor. So when you do it from the phone, it will push it out. So announcements can be going out. So we've been in big need for this for a while.
Yeah. Are we in this kind of need at other school sites as well?
Uh, we have other school sites that are analog. They're still working.
Okay.
This was a special case.
That was not working. Okay. Yeah, that seems like a number one safety issue. Yeah. Okay.
That's another reason why we said we're not going to take the time while we assess all of the other systems. We want to bring this individual one forward to be able to address it now.
Okay. Who's going to make a motion?
Now.
My motion.
All right. Clerk Coffee and then seconded by trustee Pizzotti. And all in favor?
Aye.
I too vote aye. Thank you. Okay. All right. I'm glad you have that. And if we find out that any of our schools are not in working order as such too, can we just have a board update on that? So we know. Okay, thank you. Okay. We have nothing this evening for our board governance, although I will make the comment as it's below our board's South evaluation as that's come out to us. I know I need to do mine as well. And so just to all of us that we get, oh, you already did it. Well done. Okay.
No comment.
All right. Well done.
Good job. Gold star.
All right. Gold star for you. The rest of us need to, to get those done.
Only one gets it.
Okay. So now we have our board and superintendent comments. Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you, President Kirby Gonzalez and trustees. Just want to start by, as usual, saying thank you for all that you do. It's, it's really hard to believe that school has been in a month. And we have had homecoming already. We have had back to school night. We've had picture day. So there's been a lot of things happening in a short amount of time. But that's what, we say that every year because it just goes by so fast. And it just lets us know that every day is important. I know, I think about a school year, we start with 180, but we're down 30. So we're at about 150. So every day is an important and every day is an opportunity for learning for our kids. And that just reminds me of why we have that motto of equity, excellence, and empowerment for every student every day. Because every day is important and we never get it back. So really wanting to thank our, our schools, our teachers, our classified staff for doing each job so well so that every day is important and we can maximize student support. In terms of communication and safety, really, I want to emphasize how important it is for our families to double check and ensure that guardian and that contact information is up to date. For all the things that we've talked about, just in hearing our labor partners' concerns, our communities' concerns. Everybody's concerned about safety. And as a parent, you want to know what information, things that are happening at your, at your child's school. And we can only do that if we have accurate information. And so we will continue to have those reminders of the way we can contact families when there is a need is based on the information we have in our system. So that's just that quick reminder. We know that attendance is important. And not only are we focused on attendance for our students, we're going to be talking about attendance for our staff as well. Because when our students show up, we want to make sure that they see those consistent faces, not only in the classrooms, but everywhere on campus. And everybody's attendance is important. So that's also going to be an ongoing message that we're going to be sharing. And so continue to look for communications about the importance of attendance. We also want to highlight, I think everybody knows by now, we had, I would just say, a special guest visiting our schools a couple of weeks ago. And what a highlight for us to be selected. And the programs that were highlighted, our career tech ed programs that were highlighted. And we had the opportunity for Governor Newsom and the first partner and the state superintendent to see what great things we, we have, but to know that our district, out of all the districts that the governor could have gone to, he picked Washington Unified. And that speaks about all the things that happened. So we're so grateful for that. We want to thank River City Administration for helping to prepare. We especially want to thank our teachers and students in our CTE programs because they were able to show the real work of what's done in those classrooms. Being able to talk to students, being able to see them prepare food, being able to see them in their everyday setting and not knowing who these people are who are walking into their classroom, but just knowing that it's about support. And we want to make sure that if we have these types of opportunities again, we always want to highlight any program we have and we want to highlight our teachers. But we also want to make sure we're highlighting our classified employees because those programs are really about providing alternative pathways. And so we know that our CSEA members, our WSTA members, all support our kids. And we want to make sure that everybody feels recognized and that all of their work is, is valued. And so we thank the governor for coming and we recognize it wasn't our, our show. And it was highlighting, unfortunately, we were not in charge of the invitation list. And we just know that we have some good feedback for them for the next time as they're compiling their invitation list of making sure all of the right people are invited who contribute to the great programs that they want to highlight. I also want to give a shout out to a Bridgeway Elementary teacher, Jessica Pagan. So earlier this month, ABC 10 in partnership with Schools First Federal Credit Union and Sacramento State's College of Education announced Jessica as the Teacher of the Month for September 2023. She was recently interviewed and the story aired for the first time earlier this week on September 12 during the ABC 10's Morning News. So if you weren't able to catch it, the segment is available on ABC 10's website and our district homepage as well. So thank you, Jessica, for all that you do to make a difference in the lives of our, our students. Yesterday, we were able to host a virtual Q and A session for our diversity recruitment and aspiring leaders program that we started and the board approved last year. It's aimed at recruiting and hiring educators who better reflect the diversity of our community and our students. The Q and A session was open to anyone interested in learning about our amazing opportunities and how can they, how they can join Team WUSD. And we have a follow-up session next week, September 20th, from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the District Office Multipurpose Room. So we're asking to get the word out because we have some great potential leaders out there and we want them to know that we are here to support. And then lastly, before I turn it over to the board, I do want to just have a public acknowledgement. We received sad news about the death of a former River City High School student, Justin McAllister. Justin was 19 years old and a freshman student and football player at Sacramento City College. And we found out that he passed following a football conditioning session on Monday evening. So we just want to express our heartfelt condolence to the family, his friends, teachers, coaches, and teammates of Justin. And our hearts and thoughts are with his family and those closest to him during this difficult time. And just know that, again, even though we, our students graduate, we're always a home base. So if there are any needs for our families, wasn't.
A member of our.
A member of our community. Got it. Got it. Thank you. So Justin was a member of our community. And even though he was not at River City High School, we are still a community. And it's really about knowing that resources are available. That's who we are. We know that our students, if they're not in our schools, they're still in our communities. They're our neighbors. They're our friends. And we want to know that our, our doors are open, our lines of communication are open if there is a need. And with that, I'll turn it over to the board.
Thank you. Trustee Pizzotti.
Thank you. Let's see. I wanted to first just say, you know, Colm's enthusiasm is infectious. And he's a great announcer, especially at homecoming football games. But more importantly, the new PA system that we got allows him the ability to actually energize the crowd and, and get everybody whipped up into a frenzy and to cheer on our team. And when he was talking about, he has YouTube things lined up, he was saying he's got, you know, special effect sounds, you know, able to pop off onto the PA system that before he would have had to hold a microphone up to a computer in order to, you know, make that sound before. Now that goes directly into the PA system and it actually produces real.
You can actually hear it.
You can hear it. Real noise. So our investment into that is, is incredible. And it just kind of makes the games that much more intense, especially for our kids and our student section. So I just wanted to say that's wonderful. Secondly, I, I wanted to say, I really, really don't mean to be, you know, a Debbie Downer when it comes to the tests, when it comes to, you know, drafting and the, or the, the analysis of these tests. I hate them. I hate standardized tests. I just want to make that so very clear because they don't work for so many kids. And yet, the majority of those kids that they don't work for still take those. And I think they skew data left and right. And it's just unfortunate. I really would much rather hear about what teachers think. And the teachers have a greater timeframe. They give a more accurate assessment. But the state of California can't tell what all the teachers. So I understand the need. I understand they help us identify where we need to put resources. But I really hope you guys can, and utilize some grades and, and, you know, teacher feedback more so than, you know, any one test on one given day or one diagnostic. I think that's so very beneficial. And then, yeah, it was great to have the first partner. I, I lead with her, the first partner and the governor there because I believe the governor's staff made a boo-boo. And, you know, I, I don't think they included in their invitation people that they needed to in CSEA, especially when they're talking about jobs that CSEA people would be doing. I thought it was a major faux pas on the governor's part. You know, I'm having my own personal battles with him right now. So I, I will just say, I'm glad that they chose us because we have so many wonderful things in our district. We have great pathways. We have so many things to showcase. There was really no better place for them to go. And to be really right in their backyard was even better for them. And it really is super, super beneficial to us. But when you have a slight, like not inviting CSEA staff, then that's, you know, that's, it kind of, it kind of makes this great, wonderful thing have a little bit of a cloud over it. So I, I just want to say thank you to Yorgos for, for coordinating and, and getting everything all squared away. And I know, you know, doing, you know, doing front work like that is just not, not easy. You know, coordinating and scheduling and all of this that. I hate it and it's not my forte, but I'm glad you are so good at it. And I want to say thank you for that. good at it, and I want to say thank you for that.
Clerk Coffee.
So I don't know if you guys noticed, but in the front rows of earlier, we had some students, and they were our Mete Council. And so hopefully they'll be back next week, next time, to hopefully for, you know, celebration. Unfortunately, I will not be here next time because I will be at the Unity Conference for Latino School Board Members. So as there will be a celebration of, you know, Hispanic Heritage Month, I won't seem, hopefully it'll be great, you guys will all enjoy it. I just won't be here, and not because I don't want to. So just make sure that's noted or that I have something else that I'm going to be at. So that's where I will be. I'm just wanting to follow up. Last time, I had an ask about, you know, the field maintenance, how was that? I was just curious, did we get any, any feedback on that?
Yes, I believe Chief Business Officer Monique Stovall has some updates he can share.
Okay, great. I will wait.
Absolutely. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
So I did get the opportunity to speak with the Maintenance and Operations Team. We talked about the maintenance of the fields. We talked about security of the field. We talked about cleaning of bathrooms and restrooms. We also talked about, are there any smaller bathrooms for little kids to be able to support them more? And then also ensuring that we're providing good customer service to those who use our facilities in the sense of making sure that they know who our contact, who their contact person is, that that person is available and visible to them and makes that connection. So during the event, we could provide good customer service. Unfortunately, there's no little portable porta-potties for little kids.
I'm gonna stop just for a minute. I very much appreciate you, and I'm not trying to stop this conversation for anything. I mean, we want to be transparent in our dialogue, but in honor of the Brown Act, it's not on our agenda.
That's great.
So I'm going to ask that maybe the rest of the update can be in writing.
Yes.
And then we can share publicly any piece.
Okay, would be happy to do so.
Yeah, I do. I appreciate it, and I appreciate your response, but.
All right. Well, that was my one, one of my asks from last time that I wanted. Also, speaking of the community schools, based off of our, you know, public comment, or not public comment, but our CSCE report, having that transparency with what's going on with the, with the funds that are federal dollars, I think it's really important that there is a lot of transparency, as that is a lot of money. Having it funnel through United Way and then we don't know where it's going, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that. I don't know about the public knowing that there's money, but it's got to go through others to ask. It just really needs to be transparent, and I'm, I would like it if we could have that possibly on and on a topic in the future of making sure transparency is something that we can discuss. That'd be great. Also, when are we going to get our student reports? Because I miss those, like our students, in October?
Student board member?
Yeah, our student board member.
October.
Okay, I was just like, I missed that, and I wanted to know when it was coming back. So that's great. Last, or not last, but next, the Homecoming game versus JV. You guys, you see JV, the JV football team out there, and they're hustling and they're doing things. They now have a purpose, they have ambition, and they are dedicated to doing what they need to do for Coach Mike, and it's incredible. It is awesome. And yeah, so that's all I got to say about that. Varsity game was successful in the sense of Homecoming was great. It was a hard game to watch, but like Colm said, he made it entertaining. He made those moments where like, wow. And he did give credit where credit was due to the opposing team when they, they had a real good player on there. And so, yeah, so definitely was, it was hard, but it was great. Big shout out to all of those who cleaned that field until 2:00 a.m. In case you didn't know, they're out there cleaning it because the following day, the field is rented by our West Sacramento Bears, and first game starts at nine, or not starts at nine, but people already there at the gate at 9:00 a.m. So, so they expect a clean field. Tiffany and her team rocked it, so kudos to her. And also commenting off of our public comments earlier from Destiny, we see you. I understand, the struggle is real. What, what is it that we can do, you know, with the rising fees of healthcare and just world around us, everything increasing? Hopefully, we can find a way to mitigate that and help where we can. And then last thing, I just asked my son, I was like, hey, if there was something that you would like me to say, what would you like? And he's like, you know, is it possible, maybe like some more shade out in the high school? Because there's a lot of kids out there, not much, you know, shade structures. So maybe that's something that we can look into. I mean, maybe not right now, since, well, maybe it is. It's kind of still hot. It's not really summer, but so on and so forth. So, yeah, that's really all I have. And that is it. And thank you for letting me know about my comments, and I will keep that for next time.
No, it was good to ask.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. That bus loop, waiting for that bus to get real hot.
Okay, Vice President Wong.
Oh, to Al, mil gracias. Mil, mil gracias por todo. And so, yeah, just appreciative of everybody. I did double duty, farm to park. Thank you so much for hosting. I know you were, you were there. And then I did Homecoming. And Colm, if you watched this later, I was there, I was just in the snack bar, which is where I am at every single Homecoming, just to make sure, one, that's actually the place where a lot of the kids come and eat and like, all of that. I get to see a lot of folks at the snack bar, running back and forth, and it's just a joyful place, just seeing and catching up with kids in many different ways. It was successful and energetic, and the Homecoming floats were beautiful and exciting. And I also wanted to acknowledge the passing of Supervisor Gary Sandy. I was able to go to his memorial on Saturday as well. I know he was part of the Two by Two when I was on it, and he was just such a grounded human and man and helped kind of lay the foundation for a lot of our comprehensive work now. So just wanted to acknowledge Gary's passing and, you know, our thoughts and prayers and support are to Mary Sandy. And if you don't know who she is, she's the Executive Director of the California Teaching Credential Commission. So she has a big job and is, you know, going through a loss. And it's, he was an amazing man. He, he supported a lot of students when he didn't need to, including my own daughter, and he wrote a kind note when she stood up against Asian hate. And really, just as a 10-year-old receiving a letter from Supervisor Sandy, just acknowledging that this, you know, you have a voice too during such a horrendous time was really, really powerful for her and something that I now will frame. And just, we hadn't thought about that. We also had a government, finally had a governance handbook, virtual meeting on Monday, boom, 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 boom. Really thank you, Virginia for Coffee for going through it. We had some questions and potential updates, so we will meet again to review those updates. And really, yes, you know, I think everybody was excited and grateful for the visit from our special guests. And also want to acknowledge that, you know, Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tony Thurman acknowledged in the absence of others not being, you know, acknowledged formally by other entities, if you will. So just giving some love where there are leaders who actually did acknowledge that work. And so we're just, yeah, we're just grateful for, for the visit to be chosen. It says a lot about us as a district. He could have chosen anybody. But I also have to say the highlight was one of the reasons it made, that made, that it happened is because a River City High School grad worked in his office, who was also a Southport Duck. So, so quack, quack, Duck family, but also he had a lot of choices. But I think, you know, again, people know I'm a person of faith, and that that was definitely a clear connection. And just, we should be proud of all of our River City High School graduates because they do a lot of pretty amazing things. So, all right, that's it for me.
Yes. That's a lot of choice, but is there really anywhere as great as our, you know, culinary? I mean, you walk in those rooms and they are just so uniquely special, thanks to the taxpayers of this community who helped us with that bond and just a really, just a really great space. So I really appreciate being on this board that when there's a lot of events and when we can't go to them, for example, that, which was so special that my colleagues were all there and that the board was well represented. So thank you for that. I was camping at Sly Park with the seventh graders all day, and so every day for the whole week. And it was really special. And, and I just really want to acknowledge that and thank this board and the district for that important investment that very few places do to pay for every single student to go to outdoor education. And they went as seventh graders, which is not typical, but because of staffing shortages last year. But, you know, it's not a site that is often with seventh graders and probably would like to keep it that way. But our seventh graders, let me just tell you, they were the first group that was there for the year. They were kicking off their school year with us. And I cannot tell you how many staff members said the kids were wonderful. What a gift it was to start this year with your students and these kids. And so it's just really a special place to be. It's nice to get out of our spaces and to be there. And it was also very clear to me that we need to discuss investments in, in our buses. And if, if there is a request that comes to us for buses, because not one, but two buses struggled to make it up that hill. And so while we have a lot of investments in the district in our electric buses, they can't go on the long trips. And so that was something that I was not, that I was a little bit, had a blind spot too, until it was made very clear to me. And then with that said, also, yes, I really appreciate everybody being at Homecoming. I am on the board of an organization, West Sac Play, that partners with the city for outdoor shade structures and watering grounds at our parks. And we picked that day six months ago, and then they moved Homecoming up to where it's not normally this early. And so otherwise, that of course would not have, we would not have made a conflict. But our sea monkeys came nonetheless, and they kicked us off, and they were incredible, and they played wonderful, and then they packed up and went right over to the game. And our culinary students made some of the desserts, and they were a huge hit. So thank you to all of them. And I also want to acknowledge, we said that we would, is Clerk Coffee and I did meet with CSCE this week, and we had the same update that we shared here publicly, discussing health clerks, discussing Kenan and the community schools piece. And I think that was all of them, yes. And, and so that was a listening piece with them. And I'm looking briefly just to make sure that I hit all of these. And I want to thank you for acknowledging Supervisor Sandy. He was an important player in our region and then also in our community, as well as he represented part of West Sacramento, and he was a member of our, of our board as well, and someone who always clearly put the community and community needs first. And, and that was done through his questioning, and that was done through, was important to him. And, and I think his favorite role he would share was not supervisor, but probably that of grandfather. And so just, just an all-around wonderful human. So thank you for that acknowledgement. And after we go through our board agendas, we can close in a German with him as well. Okay, so with that, we have our future board agenda items. And I have on here, Clerk Coffee had shared, if there's a way that we can have some type of budget update of the funding, am I hearing you right, for grant funding and what that looks like if it goes through United Way? How do we know what those dollars are doing versus when it comes through as the state grant?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just more of, I think they're either, either the public is not aware, and so it's a, you know, it's just more of just giving us all the tools so that there is no misleading information. It's to keep everybody on the same page, as well as how does it go about requesting items? Because if somebody's asking, is it, when they ask for things, are they asking it for one individual versus, well, what if we have a full bulk need, or there's an event coming, or how is that all working and how they request things? If there is a process of that, I think we should know. And so the public also knows how to request for things for the community schools or through the community schools.
Okay.
If that makes sense. Does that make sense?
I, we will be able to provide that update.
Okay.
You know, we are very thankful to have this grant and know that we are fortunate in terms of our district to have two grants, where in Yolo County, there are districts that don't have any grants. And knowing that the federal grant was funded to the United Way with, to support Washington Unified, whereas the state funding was for Washington Unified and supporting our work was, is with the United Way. So it's, the funding I know is, is hard to figure out who's in charge of, of what funding, but making sure there's clarity is really important because we all understand the importance of these dollars, and we all appreciate our community partners who have been in this work with us since the beginning. And so we want to make sure that everyone understands what we're doing. We, we know the why.
Right.
Now, we just need to make sure everyone understands the how we are providing those services, which includes an understanding of the process for resource distribution.
Okay, yeah. And I, I think that that will be very helpful. When you look at who has the grants across the nation, there's multiple places where you'll see in states that have United Way, who has collected that grant funding on behalf of the district. But understanding that is helpful because there was a piece, I thought, oh, how much did we spend on da-da-da? And I searched on iTunes, and I go, oh, we didn't. Maybe that was the United Way money. So it's just helpful for all of us to understand what money goes where and how we communicate that.
And I think just highlighting the partnership, right? There's the dollar amount, but what is the, what's the value add is probably just a presentation of that. I think money's the one side of like, it's just the services, right? Increase in services is also important. So both coins of like, yes, you spent it, but what, what's the result? What's the impact? What's the, what's the return on investment for the community?
Yeah. Yes, I think that's great. Okay, are there any other pieces? We have our discussion of board self-evaluation, summer program update, student attendance update, Measure Z update. It's a lot. They're not, well, there's many, many are in September. October is our Measure Z update. Okay, I'd like to ask that we look at, that we have the discussion for that our staff have the discussion with the city. And so this could be done at a city at a two-by-two meeting, but about what it would look like in terms of an SRO on campus. And it can be reimagined, but I think it's important to even understand what that would take. Removing of, one, SRO was for budget reasons. The other was abrupt. And so what does that look like in terms of possible need? And a lockdown is not really the only reason that we would talk about an SRO, but I think it's a reason that is important to bring up, and that is when, we did have a lockdown recently. There were not, there were not the capacity of the police department to stay on the site until that threat was completely resolved. And so I think it's important that we have this conversation and look into, what are the possibilities with the city? What would that look like? And then we can have a discussion later about that. But I'd like to know that, that process and what that would cost, what that would look like. And then there's, of course, many other reasons that our outreach specialists and others have talked to us about what SROs do and have done in the past to support their work as one piece of a very comprehensive student services team. But I would like to have that. So we can do that maybe at the next two-by-two, or if staff want to.
or if staff want to start talking, uh, with the city and see what that looks like. So you're even prepared for a two by two to have that discussion. Okay. All right. Well, with that then, um, we will, uh, close in honor of Supervisor Gary Sandy this evening. Thank you.